Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the June 18, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from June 4, 2019. Make a motion to approve the minutes dated June 4, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing none and hearing none, I'm moving to number three, which is the review and approval of repurposing operating budget for capital, interdepartmental and intradepartmental and reserve fund transfers for FY 2019. Is Sue coming?
She's coming.
Okay. So, for those of you who tune in regularly at this time of year, you'll know that this is a routine financial transaction that the town undertakes, given our budget processes. And Sue Nickerson, our town accountant, is here to take us through it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, we'll start with the Excel spreadsheet. The top is the 19 appropriations of 580. Article 17 from town meeting of 2019, we had added 777,413 to the reserve fund. We have approved three of them during the year for a total of 147,213. So, our estimated surplus was 1,210,200. Now, before you, we have a list of pending reserve fund transfers, interdepartmental transfers, and intradepartmental transfers. So, we'll go down the list. First one is legal, for a total of 455,000. And the need for legal counsel continues to exceed the appropriated amount for these services.
The good news on this was, I believe, we did do a minor corrective action this year with the budget and intend to hopefully continue to do that going forward.
I mean, it's a big number. We're a complicated, highly-regulated, $100 million-plus entity with a lot of employees and a lot of activities. We, you know, in particular, had a very comprehensive and busy town meeting season this year. You know, it's not something we're not aware of. It's something that we continue to try to address.
True.
I'd also mention that the budget for this amount, I mean, even this expenditure is less than 1% of the total budget. And I think if you look at communities around the Commonwealth, they have bigger legal budgets that are more reflective of their size and complexity.
Well, and, you know, I think we continue to get remarkable legal service from our specialized legal team. And I think, you know, I think your office continues to manage that process very well.
Thank you.
Do you want to do motions on these?
Do you want to go each?
Do you want to do them again?
Should we go through and then we can just?
Yeah, yeah, let's go through them all and then we'll do the votes at the end, if that's all right.
All right, the next one is snow and ice, in the amount of 248,751. And although the past winter did not have a large number of snowstorms, there were significant amount of days with freezing temperatures that required sanding and salting events. Last year, the reserve fund transfer was 490,000, so...
Wish I could take credit for the savings there.
I'm going to give it all to Randy.
That might be a higher power.
I'm giving it all to Randy.
All right. Any other questions?
I'm all set.
Okay. The next one is selectman expenses for 85,000. This is for consulting services related to water company acquisition and transition.
I would just note, this was all incurred prior to my...
Way to stick with the team there, Joe.
Well, I would just say that, you know, we had the good fortune, for a long haul, to rely on the expertise of significant volunteer time. I think we were very careful in spending any money on any outside consulting services. And, you know, toward the tail end of this, in the run-up to town meeting, it became apparent that we needed technical expertise on the regulatory side, and that's in large part what this reserve fund transfer is aimed at.
And I've got to say that, given what was on your plate, it's amazing that it's low. So, thank you.
Okay, the next one is fire salaries for $80,000. Unfortunately, we still have multiple vacancies that we have been working to fill. These vacancies are the result of five retirements and two members leaving in late FY 2018. Due to the lack of qualified candidates and the time it takes to hire and train the new employees, we are not able to fill all the positions. The unfilled positions have required us to overspend our overtime to maintain minimum staffing levels to cover sick and vacation leave. I just want to mention that last year at this time, we were indicating that this would happen, and we thought to the tune of 200,000 in April. It went down to 110,000. Now, it's down to 80,000. And I just want to commend Chief Murphy for keeping it as low as he can.
It's not easy to manage that overtime budget, and the chief's done an excellent job.
You know, particularly in light of minimum staffing levels.
True.
And, you know, I know, we all know, that you've been working extremely hard on those salary dollars and overtime dollars, so appreciate that. And also trying to get, you know, get folks scheduled for academies and making sure that we're trying to hire when we can hire.
Two people started tomorrow.
Excellent news.
I remember in the budget process, you were talking about some creative ways you were looking at to fill vacancies, and that's been really successful. And I would just mention to the public that we do have minimum staffing levels, and we're not going to compromise those.
True.
Steve, it's 11 on a shift at a time? Okay, so, at any one given point in time, there are 11 firefighters that are taking care of this entire town and running the ambulance service. And we're not going to let it go down to 10 to...
True.
We're just not going to do that because the demand for those services is what it is. And I'd also mention that what isn't reflected here that comes in our local receipts is over $1 million of ambulance revenue. So, the fire department is also generating revenue that helps support many town services.
The next one is workers' comp for 41,315. This is to cover the cost for the remaining of the fiscal year. The town has settled another one of the three long-term cases, and hopefully will be resolving the last one in FY 2020.
Questions on that one?
The next one is employers' Medicare taxes for 37,500. New employees are replacing retired employees who did not have to pay into Medicare tax. This tax is a direct link to salaries. And it has been going down, and, you know, when we add new people, we also add new Medicare taxes, so...
So, it's just a fluctuation in the workforce?
Yes.
And you've made a comment here about trying to update this throughout the budget process. So, is that something we work on going forward?
We're going to try to.
Okay.
At the last minute with all the budgets, that's one we usually, I've already approved. But then when we get the school budget, we're not sure what the salary number is going to be.
Right, right.
So, that will add to Medicare.
Sue and I were working today with the AdCom chair on some ideas that we might be able to implement next year to correct this. You know, this is a regular occurrence.
Right.
It's not a big percentage of the total, but it's a regular occurrence out short. What can we do to adjust that so that doesn't happen, that kind of thing?
Okay.
Avoid the need for reserve fund transfers, is the thought.
Great. Any other questions on that one? All right.
Next one is town meeting expenses, $27,202. Expenses for the additional audiovisual services and equipment, chairs, and warrants for the two-day town meeting.
I just want to take this opportunity to give a shout-out to our town clerk, Eileen McCracken, to Tom, to Michelle, to the school department for their cooperation, Steve Becker and Kate Richardson, Bonard Fage. When you think about the fact that we had a meeting simultaneously being broadcast in three rooms, everybody had a seat, everybody could hear, everybody could see, and we made provisions for being able to accommodate even more people than we had because this was an unpredictable... It was difficult to predict the attendance. It was a job well, well-done.
Yes. The only thing I would add to that is Bonard Fage was... He was exceptional.
It was unbelievable.
Yeah, it was, like you said, it was a very well-run meeting, and that's in large part because of the clarity of the sound, clarity of the visuals as necessary for Mr. Puzo. It was a Herculean effort. He spent a week over there prep. And his rates, just so everybody knows, are probably about half of the going commercial rate out there. He does a great job on behalf of his town, as he calls it.
Yep. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
And H. Kim. We can't forget Harbor Media.
H. Kim. No, they were great, yep.
Okay, the next one is unemployment for $25,000. This is to cover the cost of unemployment claims for the rest of the fiscal year. We did have a higher-than-usual amount of unemployment claims this year. The next one is town engineer salaries for $18,100. The amount requested is to fulfill a mid-year contract salary line item obligation and a buyout of a retirement.
Okay. And the salary line will be incorporated in the budget for next year?
Next one is town engineer expenses for $11,950. The amount requested is to pay for engineering support services for the department while short-staffed.
I think we were going to add 10 to that today.
There's another one. We did two separate ones.
Okay.
So, two separate reserve fund charges?
I'll stop mumbling.
I see the two separate ones.
There's two separate ones.
Yeah.
The next one came in this morning. That's why there's two separate ones. Town engineer expenses for $10,000. Emergency funds needed to hire a licensed site professional to assist the town with a possible contamination identified on 6/18/2019 during excavations to shore up the harbor wall at Whitney Wharf Park.
So, that's today's day.
That's today. I'm looking at my watch and saying, so this is something we just...
This happened. So, we have a grant from the... Some money, airmark money from the state to do some cleanup work and revetment work over at Whitney Wharf Park. We were doing that today, Randy and his crew, and as they were digging down there, they recognized a smell of petroleum, investigated a little bit. It was coming from the soil. If you remember, that used to be an old site for a gas station. Randy appropriately notified us. We need to engage with an LSP to determine exactly what's happening there. And further, Randy, again, took the other appropriate step of notifying the DEP immediately. They're going to come down tomorrow. They determined that since there was no liquid flowing, that didn't seem like an immediate emergency. So, they're going to come down in the morning and make sure that this is... They gave us appropriate guidance on what to do with it.
Okay.
You know, we're not sure where we're going to go with this yet, but we'll engage the LSP immediately and get their report.
Okay.
But you have not yet engaged the LSP?
Not yet.
So...
I needed this money first.
But you've got an estimate, the $10,000?
Yes.
Okay.
We do. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is harbor master expenses for $9,001. And this is last summer, the town of Hingham, through the Board of Selectmen, entered into sublease with the MBTA for the harbor master office at the shipyard. The sublease agreement requires an annual rent payment of $1 and an additional rent payment of $9,000 for maintenance and operation of the building. This is in FY '20's budget. We just didn't have it in FY '19. The next one is elder services salaries for $8,400. The retirement of former director led to a payout in accrued benefits, as well as one week of overlap coverage of $10,500. The departure of the F. Full-Time Administrative Assistant also resulted in a benefit payout of $2,100.
So, this is the net?
This is the net.
Next one is elder services expenses for $3,000. An unexpected repair on the senior transport vehicle, front brakes, rotors, 60K mile service and ball joint, estimated total is $2,980.
Okay.
Next one, town meeting salaries for $1,0671. Additional school custodial staff, town hall custodial staff, and checkers for two-night town meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all those totaled, if we approve all of them, is $1,061,890, which will give us a net result of a surplus in the reserve fund of $148,310.
Sue should go to the vote.
Yeah, let's vote the reserve fund. So, Sue, just to be clear, then, the 148,310 has to take us through the end of the fiscal year, right?
If anything else comes up, yes. And then we'll close out to fund balance if we don't use it.
Okay. Okay, I'd suggest we, while this is all fresh in our mind, move through the votes for reserve fund transfers?
Sure.
Let me do it.
Sure.
So, I move that we make the following transfers from the reserve fund. First, to the selectman legal services in the amount of $455,000. Keep going, and then we'll just do it at the end. To the DPW snow and ice in the amount of $248,751. To the selectman expenses in the amount of $85,000. To fire overtime in the amount of $80,000. To workers' compensation in the amount of $41,315. To employers' Medicare taxes in the amount of $37,500. To town meeting expenses in the amount of $27,202. To unemployment compensation in the amount of $25,000. To town engineering salaries in the amount of $18,100. To town engineering expenses in the amount of $11,950. And again, to town engineering expenses in the amount of $10,000. To harbor master R&amp;M grounds in the amount of $9,001. To elder services salaries in the amount of $8,400. To elder services R&amp;M vehicles in the amount of $3,000. And to town meeting custodians in the amount of $1,671.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, interdepartmental transfers.
Okay, interdepartmental transfers. That is... Interdepartmental transfer is a transfer between two different departments. The first two is town hall capital and DPW capital in the amounts of $84,216 and $44,000, respectively. And it's coming from the group insurance surplus. If you remember, this is how we...
Yeah.
We bridged the gap in the FY '20 budget by accelerating capital into FY '19.
So, this is when I... Sue didn't remind me of this until I was asking a lot of questions, then I said, "Oh, was this when I was going through all of my machinations about fund balance?" And she reminded me that indeed it was. So, here we are, folks.
And the last one is GAR hall expenses for $1,700, and it is coming from the Veterans' Benefits. It was an emergency boiler repair.
Did you cover the middle one, the 44?
DPW capitals? Yes, I'd say both of them were from the budget.
And the DPW capital is acceleration of a capital purchase that's otherwise part of the capital plan, right?
Yes. They both actually were on the capital plan for 2020.
Okay.
Okay, last.
Well, so, why don't we do a motion on the interdepartmental... So, I move that we do the interdepartmental transfers as follows. To town hall capital outlay from group insurance in the amount of $84,216. From... To DPW capital outlay from group insurance in the amount of $44,000. And to GAR hall R&amp;M from Veterans' Benefits in the amount of $1,700.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Now, the last category is intradepartmental transfers, and this is transfers within a department. And these ones, I am going to ask the department heads to come up so they can explain it. Randy? I'm throwing them under the bus. First, we have DPW from salaries to road building account for $130,000. The amount requested is necessary for the following unforeseen reasons. The drainage system on Bradley Hill Road in Bremers Circle needs to be replaced before the paving of the roads. So, if you have any questions, Randy's here.
What is the timing of this work, Randy?
The timing? We're getting the materials delivered as we speak, and hopefully the drainage will be done in July, and then the paving will be planned in the fall.
And just, you know, I think what I've heard over the years is that when you do work like drainage system or replacing any underground utilities, you want to let that road settle for, like, 90 days so that when you do the paving, it enhances the life of the new road?
We usually do that. In this case, we're grinding the road, so we're going to reshape it and grind it all up. It's going to be a total rebuild.
Meaning curb-to-curb.
Yep.
Curb-to-curb. So, we won't have to wait that long.
Okay.
So, when we get the paving company and set up the schedule, it should be more than 90 days... Quicker than 90 days.
Yep. Just, I know for the residents of Bradley Hill Road and Bremers Circle, it feels like a long time. And when one part of the project's done and you're waiting for the next part of the project, sometimes using that road is less than ideal, and we appreciate the residents' patience. And I think in the fall, when this beautiful road is completed with new drainage and new utilities underground, it will last for a very long time. And... But we do appreciate the residents' patience.
Yeah, and we also have some tree work that we also have to do. So, that'll be done probably in this month.
Thank you. Great.
Thanks.
The next one is landfill salaries to capital of $30,000. Anytime you see capital, we do have a capital repurposing policy. The department heads ask the town accountant and the town administrator, then ask for capital outlays permission. Then they come to the Board of Selectmen and ask their permission. They go to advisory and ask their permission. This has already been done. This is now just the mechanics to get the money transferred over to the capital.
Great. It sounded like a good deal on this vehicle, right?
It was a very...
Yes, very good deal. It's another tractor, and we're getting it from a reputable person who asked us, and our personnel knows them personally and has checked all the vehicles, and it's going to be an excellent purchase.
Great.
It saves the town money overall.
That's fantastic. Okay.
Okay. The next one is landfill expenses to salary for $27,000. And this is requested to necessary for the following unforeseen reasons. The increase in the union contract was more than expected in the unforeseen overtime to grind brush and haul trash and recycling trailers.
I would just mention, with all three of these transfers, which total about $200,000, this is actually... One part of the public works budget is under budget, and another part has some higher-than-expected costs. But overall, as has been the case for many years, the public works budget, the amount that is spent is what town meeting approved at the beginning of the year. So, I know that doesn't just happen, Randy. It takes a lot of management and oversight during the year. So, thank you.
You're welcome. One of the things is, the reason we have to do this is because we're starting to haul more and more recyclables. And with the storms that we've had, it generates a lot of trees, bound trees and brush, which we have to then grind. And then, we need a machine there and a person there to load trailers and the machine that grinds. So, that's overtime that isn't really expected with the storms. And after each storm, we seem to have to grind, so...
And so, the hauling of recyclables, is that because of the change in the recycling market, or is that just because of an uptick in town-wide recycling activity?
Well, we... It's more costly to have it hauled.
Okay.
So, we're doing more and more hauling.
Okay.
What used to not cost us anything and would get some money for the commodities, and then come in and just take it, now they don't. They want a fee to haul it out. So, we're utilizing the tractor and the trailer we bought, and that's just... At some times, we have to do it on overtime.
And where do you haul it to?
There's several locations.
That will take it, then?
Oh, yeah. We have contracts with the people that take it.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it for DPW.
Sure.
So, why don't I handle the motions for...
We'll vote DPW while you're sitting there?
So, I move that the board approve the following intradepartmental transfers. From DPW wages to DPW road building drainage in the amount of $130,000. From DPW transfer station expenses to DPW transfer station capital outlay in the amount of $30,000. And from DPW transfer station expenses to DPW transfer station wages in the amount of $27,000.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Randy.
And the next three are for the police.
Nice try. No, this... Oh, okay.
I thought you pointed to me.
Wrong key. Nice try.
The first two are salaries to capital, and the first two steps have been done. They did ask the town accountant and the town administrator for scheduling purposes. We couldn't get them on your schedule, so we're going to do the asking of the repurposing to capital and then vote on the transfer to actually transfer the money.
I see. Okay.
Okay, so, the first one is salaries to capital at $25,841. And this is for radio enhancements at Derby Shop and area. The repeater receiver is no longer functional and is incompatible with the updated digital radio system. This is an important link that will improve radio communication within the Derby Shops area. Due to metal construction and new energy-efficient treated windows, the radio signal are weakened. This will greatly improve radio communication. And we have experts here to...
Yeah, so, what...
One expert.
So, what is it?
What is it?
So...
What are we getting for $25,000?
Basically, the radio system for the police department is broadcast from Turkey Hill, the top of Turkey Hill. There is another repeater site, which is at Linden Ponds, which can be manually switched on if there's an event going on up there and they can't hear, the reception's poor. The Derby Street Shops used to have a, like, a small satellite receiver that just did the shops. So, we originally looked at getting... And that's been offline for several years. The officers that are in the Derby Street Shops, any of those stores, they can't transmit or receive from inside any of those stores, which is obviously a safety issue if they're in there on a call. Many times, they're going by themselves. The first car and scene will be in by themselves in a building, so... The satellite receiver sort of took care of that there, but when we started looking at the cost to replace the one that was at Derby Street Shops, we found that it was nearly the same to upgrade the repeater at Linden Ponds to instead of being on a switch on and off... So, with that on and off switch, by the way, would take the Turkey Hill one offline, so it's either one or the other, or both. This would allow both to be on all the time, which would increase coverage, not only at the Derby Street Shops, but everywhere else on that end of town. So, Sharp Street, the South Shore Collaborative, which we have an officer stationed at full-time.
Yep.
Notre Dame Academy. So, all the locations that we currently have, a lot of issues with radios transmitting and receiving in, excuse me, that would take care of that, instead of just taking care of the Derby Street Shops.
Okay. And did we have to do anything with the Turkey Hill receiver as a result?
No, no.
That just stayed... Okay.
Yes.
Okay. It seems like a smart use of $25,000 to me. Any questions?
What's the useful life on what's being proposed? Is this a two-year solution, a five-year solution? How long is this likely to...
I'll turn it over to the expert. Turn it to T. D. here.
The repeaters, in excess of 10 years. They were placed prior to the Shrek opening. They were replaced by the town, and they've been operating fine since then. So, this is an enhancement to that, to those repeaters. So, the repeaters themselves don't have to be replaced. It's just some enhancements that will make them digital and make them simulcast, like the deputy explained. And we found that it was more beneficial, if we blanket that entire end of town with signal, more beneficial than just helping one location.
But how long... I mean, is it... But how long, I mean, is this likely to solve the issue for extended period of time?
As we've been told, this is the latest technology, and we've been told that it's going to be operational for many years to come.
Thank you.
And there's a service contract with it as well that covers any repairs that come up.
Okay. The next one is police salaries to capital for sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. This is for video recording system for suspect interviews and booking of prisoners. The current system is failing because of age, service, and is expensive, and parts are no longer being made. Surface contract is approximately two thousand dollars per year. The newer system is also digital and capable of voice recording in the interview room and booking area. The digital capability allows viewing access on designated computers within the police station network. This allows access for prosecutors, detectives, and other designated personnel to process videos from their offices.
Questions?
No.
Good.
And the last one is police salaries to expenses for sixteen thousand and twenty-five dollars. This is for radio licensing for digital radio conversion. Back in March, the police department notified town accountant Nickerson that we may require a twenty thousand dollar reserve fund transfer to cover unexpected costs related to Hingham Police radio system. Federal law mandates holders of radio licenses and the VHF band narrowband their systems and to convert to digital radio systems. This essentially allows more licenses that can be issued in the public safety bandwidth. Most people have experienced the conversion of the cell phone networks and television conversions from analog to digital. I believe that experience was a positive change. To complete this, it is required under new federal licenses for the current radio equipment to operate on digital. All the towns in Shrek regional systems are paying to convert their part of the system. The future maintenance will be absorbed by Shrek. This is a will allow approved communications for the officers, especially when on portable radios that do not have the power of a mobile cruiser radio. The licenses have been approved and paid for. We are working to convert to digital on July eighth, two thousand nineteen.
So every town in Shrek is making the same move?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Okay. On the same timeline?
Police agencies, yes.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Want to take a turn?
Sure. I'll make a motion to repurpose twenty five thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars of police department salaries for FY nineteen capital radio enhancements.
Do you want to read them all?
I'll make a motion to recommend an intradepartment transfer from police department salaries to police department capital outlay in the amount of twenty five thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars. I'll make a motion to repurpose sixteen thousand five hundred fifty dollars of police department salaries for a video recording system, and to recommend an intradepartment transfer from police salaries to police department capital outlay in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred fifty dollars. And lastly, I'll make a motion to recommend an intradepartment transfer from police department salaries to police department expenses in the amount of sixteen thousand twenty-five dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I've got a, do we have a...
Yeah.
Extra, or was one missing from the list? I've got a...
One wasn't repurposed.
One wasn't a repurpose to capital, so you didn't have to...
I got it. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make it up.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
And I'm done.
Now you've got to go next door.
We love it.
You're not done today.
Your whole audience is coming with me.
Taking the show on the road?
Taking the show on the road. You're in good hands with Ms. Montseguer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Don't spend it all in one place, Sue. Okay. We have a request from Plaza Azteca for a change of manager. Are you here for that this evening? Mind, actually, why don't you join us at the podium, give us your name and address, and let us know what you'd like?
Hi.
How are you tonight?
Hey, how are you?
Good. All right. So change in manager.
Yes, my name is Maria Bravo. I live in Pembroke. And I've been helping Plaza Azteca for a little bit. And they finally decided to give me a good position.
More responsibility? Okay.
Yes, a little more.
Great.
So does this mean that the license, the liquor license, is now going to be associated with you?
Yes.
And have you, where did you work before Plaza Azteca?
I worked in Minnesota and in Georgia.
Okay.
So Plaza Azteca will be my first employment in Boston.
Okay.
And I noticed that you've signed a query request. Do you know if that's been processed yet, or our approval will be subject to successful review of the query request?
I think there's a gentleman out there that he might know better. He's one of my supervisors. He's the one that was helping me with all of that, because I'd never done that before. Can he...
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a reason he's outside?
Well, I think he came in a little late and was shy.
And I can check with HR in terms of the query being processed.
Okay.
It was, or it will be?
I can check with her.
Oh, oh, okay.
Welcome.
Hello.
Could you just state your name and address for the record?
My full name is Sayed Ali Hasham, and my address is two forty-one High Street in Bristol, Rhode Island.
Okay. And so we were just going through your change of manager application, and Mr. Fisher had a question about the query application?
I didn't know if that had been processed yet, or it's to be processed.
The federal or town?
The state.
We submitted it, but I'm not sure if it has been processed or not. I recall distinctly submitting it once, and then submitting it again with her correct photo identification.
Okay. So typically, that would be a requirement for approval. So we could do an approval subject to the successful processing of that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. How did your Cinco de Mayo go this year? I know you worked extensively with the police and fire on making that a successful event. So that went well.
Yeah, it's usually a very successful event. Unfortunately, we couldn't do anything outside this year due to the weather.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, the only, the one year that we could do something outside, we didn't because we didn't have enough parking. But this year, we applied for the permits and everything, but it's just the weather didn't help. But regardless, people loved it. Everybody had a good time.
Great, great. Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Take a motion.
So I move that we approve the requested change of manager to Maria Bravo, subject to a successful processing of her query review.
And subject to the approval of the alcohol.
Yes, and subject to the state Alcohol Beverage Control Commission approval.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. Good luck. Change in DVA as well?
So are we going to be proceeding with that one, or not?
No, the DVA, no.
Okay.
So the DVA, we needed some clarification on the paperwork. But Sharon was able to separate it, so we could at least get that approval completed. Okay. Next up is coyote awareness. I think Michelle is going to take us through some points.
I just have a brief overview. I think ACO Badger and Chief Olson will be best placed to provide an update. But Tom asked me to quickly update the board. I know you were part of some of these conversations about the work that the town's done over the last few weeks, because we continue to take the coyote issue very seriously and are trying to address it from multiple angles. I know Chairman Johnson and ACO Badger and Chief Olson spoke with representatives from the environmental police and the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife last week, I believe, on Friday. And we're scheduling them to come out and review the situation at the country club to see what can be done there, perhaps with fencing and other things to disperse the coyote population a little bit. I know we've collected a lot of information through the new website portal on the police page. And I know that ACO Badgers continue to do a lot of outreach with schools, neighborhoods, and residents. But I'd turn it over to the chief and Leslie to...
Turn it over to Leslie. How's that work?
Well done, chief.
Delegate.
Thank you for having me tonight. I am happy to be back to report on some updates regarding the coyote situation going on in town. We have implemented the new way to report sightings, which has been very successful. Altogether, we have totaled one hundred and three sightings that have come in since it has been implemented. To give a quick overview, we had two sightings that came in in South Hingham. We had, I'm sorry, yes, we had three total that came into South Hingham. We had twenty-nine that came into the center area of Hingham, North Hingham, twenty-nine, Bearco Park area, eleven, and Crow Point, ten. So that averaged out to one hundred and three that we received. Now, from January two thousand nineteen to present, we had over seventy-nine related coyote calls, whether it was sightings. We had three dog bites involving coyotes, where the dogs were the ones that were bitten. And then we also had some interactions where coyotes interacted with a deer that got stuck in someone's fence. We were able to shoo the coyotes off. A couple of the other sightings were either involving children that were out playing and were supervised with their parents, and a coyote ran through the yard pretty close by to where the children were playing. And we have all those reported and documented in police reports as well. In the little packets that I gave you guys, you will also see that I wrote kind of an update as well of all the things that I've been up to, along with trying to respond as best I can to all the sightings that have come in. I'm trying to prioritize from most serious and get back to those. So one of the things is the most serious that come in, or an area that's seeing a frequency in coyote sightings quite often. I set up either an individual for that yard or a group neighborhood. I've been successful with a couple of neighborhoods that have done group and have gotten together with them. They will, what happens is, I usually have two or three neighbors work together, and they will reach out to their whole neighborhood, because as most neighborhoods at this point, they either have some kind of connection through Facebook, or they have a private email group. And those two or three will get together, send out that group email to the neighborhood, and they will set up a date and time. And with that, what happens is, I can go out beforehand and check out the area with those three people that have been picked as the ones to kind of be the spokespersons to start off with. And I check out the area and start to point out what could be the reasons why the coyotes come in. Then we have that meetup group, and I talk to all the adults first. And then the second part, we bring in the kids, and we discuss with them how to be safe playing in their neighborhoods and being aware of the coyotes, and what to do if they do have an interaction with a coyote. And those have all worked out successfully. I'm in the process right now to work with the conservatory park area to get something set up in, as well as Baker Hill. Those are two areas that are seeing a lot of frequency. Partridge and Quail Run has already had one, and it was very successful. And I'm continuing to work with them and check in with them. So there's that part. Another part, as we discussed, I've been reaching out to the schools. As we know, the school year has come to an end. But Foster School is the one school that is seeing quite a bit of coyote sightings. And that is partly to do with the fact that the school resides unfortunately right in the habitat of coyote, perfect for where they can go in and sleep and make dens. A second part is, on one side of the school, we have free-roaming chickens. And in another neighborhood, on the other side of the school, we have some free-roaming chickens. And I've noticed, following the coyote paths, instead of going, wanting to go down the main roads, it's easier to cross through the back part and go up the hill to where one set of the chickens may be, and then can turn around, come back down, and go where the other set is. And that's why we seem to see them making that frequent area of sightings happening quite a bit. So we're working on that. One of the thoughts with the school and talking to the principal, I know there's been a lot of talk about remodeling, fixing up all of that. But one of the things that we have talked about is potentially maybe fencing in the back area, because that would eliminate the coyotes of having the access to cross over and using that as a cross-through, or also a quiet spot, because further in the back is the field, the playing field, and a baseball field, and a place for them to relax and lay. They would have to stay out into the wooded area. And that would make it a lot harder for them and a lot more uncomfortable, wanting to, they would have to choose more populated areas versus going through the quieter areas. So that is something I've been discussing with them, as well as always being readily available when they had events, releases, kids going in, drop-offs in the morning. We had a few. I had taken a picture. I've hung out at gym classes, recesses. I've also tagged along on a couple of their nature walks up and through the woods that they do. Those were all fun, and no issues happened then. But I made a point of being there. All the teachers at this point has my direct cellphone. So if they have a class or something that's coming up outside, they knew that they could contact me, and I would head right over there. Another part that I had, I've always been doing, but I had had another group meetup, was with the Boy Scout Bear Den. We met in the library, and we had a great conversation about pet safety. I even brought my German Shepherd alarm to give them an idea of what a coyote, the size of a coyote, what it looks like. And not only did we talk about wildlife safety, but we also talked about dog safety while we were there at the library. And that went really well. And they had a lot of great questions. And then, as we also discussed, we've been talking regularly with Mass Fish and Wildlife, Environmental, Knowing the Wildlife, on other ways to combat the issues. And I also, in the packet, had made more copies of all the flyers. And in this one here in the back, has all the state official phone numbers that anyone can use and call. If they have more questions, sightings, issues, concerns, they could reach out to the state. I made sure that was included in there. The second handout, which I have in here, and I'll leave here, and we'll also have it in the selectman's office, is a great handout about understanding coyotes, advice for parents, school officials, and childcare providers. And then the last handout I have in here is one that I made up. It's not as fancy as the other ones, but it's a great checklist. If you yourself want to go down the list and check your own yard out first to see if you can fix the situation, and if you still feel like, okay, I've done everything on this checklist and more, and you want me to come out, I'm more than happy to. And I'll come out and look around and see what we can do to alleviate the problem with the coyotes coming through, or at least decrease the number of sightings. Any questions at this time?
Just an observation. It's an incredible effort that you've made. So thank you. It's...
Thank you very much.
I mean, this goes beyond what I was thinking of your initial effort. So that's really tremendous. I was going to ask whether or not these documents are also available on the website.
Yes, that's a great question. And the chief can talk about that a little bit if he wants to. And I should have mentioned that in my speech. Everything is on the website. On the front page, the chief was nice to make. You can see the links to the coyote handouts, to doing the, if you want to report a sighting. And also, it has on the website and on my animal control page, it has the video as well from the coyote symposium or conversation that I had at the library back in February with all the officials from Mass Wildlife, Environmental, and fellow ACOs in the area. So it has that as well. And that's a great thing to watch as well, and get a lot more information that way as well. So we have that. Anything else?
No, I think one of the things we've also done is educate the officers so that their response would be a little bit more updated, and they're able to give out packages to people and reference them over to Leslie for follow-up. And I think, I really want to thank the state, because they've really been responsive to us. I know that the issues for them is, we're doing all the right things. And we're going to continue to do all the right things and try to encourage people. The education is the process. They supplied us with a recent study that I read, the best I could read. It's pretty lengthy, but it examines coyote populations. And the interesting thing is, the more you... And the interesting thing is, the more you, in the wild, in the natural state, coyotes roam over a seven-mile area, and their population might be five or six coyotes per that seven miles. And that seven miles, they need to go from place to place to get their natural food. When we start to bring them into the suburban area, that range drops down to like two to three miles, and they're supporting three times the populations of coyotes. And the studies of people that actually were collected, the scat from the animals, it shows, the studies show that 30% of their scat contains what they would refer to as trash. In other words, human products that they're getting into. And this is why we see a greater population. So the key to this remains is to control that food sources. And I think that's one of the things we talk about, looking at, you know, how do we do that? Do we change the cycle of when we pick up barrels? Do we leave, do we pick them up at nighttime so they're empty during the night, as opposed to picking them up in the morning? Do we use a different kind of trash container, like they use in Boston, that sort of compact and trash? So there's a lot of different sites. I know during the permitting process, I've actually told people that if you're going to be out on a field, and you're having an event out there, you need to take all your trash and bring it with you, not dispose of it, and, you know, it needs to go to somewhere where it's safe. So there's some, I think, different things that we can look at internally and try to promote that whole concept of controlling the food source. And also, you know, I think topographically, looking at areas and identifying areas that we might be able to control through fencing and other natural barriers, the normal path that they're taking.
And I did add in there as well, the map with all the sightings. So it gives a good idea as well to where the most sightings are. It's another way of looking at it, being able to really see where the sightings are happening the most and where they may be. And this could help, on that whiteboard. And this gives a better idea for us as well, where we're seeing them and where they are frequently, frequenting the most and showing up. And that is a sign, again, that those could be areas where the food sources are really great, or potentially that their dens could be somewhere in that area. It may not be the immediate area, but it could be within that one to seven-mile radius of that area. So.
And so much of this is an educational effort, so it's terrific that you've done that.
Yeah.
Mary? Thank you, and I think the data is going to help in the conversations with the state. And so I appreciate the police department working with IT to make that easy for people. I think the online is working better than having people calling 911.
Yes, definitely.
So now we can separate that if you're in an urgent situation, you call 911, but if it's more of a passive sighting, there's a different vehicle. And we appreciate the public helping us with this. Having all this data in one place will only help us with additional measures. But thank you, you've done a lot of work in a short period of time. Thank you.
And I just have to say, so I was fortunate to be able to participate on a phone call with members from Mass Fish and Wildlife, Environmental Police, Leslie and the chief, and Tom Mayo last Friday. And I think Mass Wildlife, Leslie's not going to tell you this, but they were so impressed with what she's already done. So we are actually building from a base of, I think, information and strength, and we can continue to take that forward, again, with the help of the community in reporting these sightings. But, you know, Leslie, I think you were on this in a way that I think they were very impressed with, we were very impressed with, and it puts us in a position to then kind of take in this additional information and just begin to extend and expand, you know, our understanding of essentially living with wildlife, because that's what we're doing. And as Michelle said, we will continue our conversations with the state around particular areas where there is high traffic to see if there are some things that we can do to address, or at least better understand why the sightings are happening, where they are. So again, I echo Joe and Mary. I think you responded very quickly, efficiently, effectively, and with empathy to this citizen concern, and, you know, I think we're on the right track. Anybody in the audience have any questions on this one?
Could I add one final educational point?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I thought, I saw this today. It was a news story that came out, and I thought it was really to the point, even though this is about bears, and this happened out in Oregon, or actually Washington County, I thought this was something that really hits home to what's happening here. And this is the story that WCVB put out, and it said, "A bear cub was killed by wildlife experts after it kept wandering into heavily populated areas and soon became friendly with people who were feeding it. And the Washington County Sheriff's Office said the wildlife team became worried when the cub first started taking treats from guests near Haggad Lake. The bear was comfortable with people to the point that it was allowing some guests to take pictures with it." Eventually, the bear was killed, because according to Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, it wasn't possible to relocate it. According to some experts, the bear had become too habituated with humans. And humans are more likely to have dangerous interactions in the future, and it cannot be relocated. So the second part of this is, I wanted to read the definition of habituation, because I think it's important to understand that as we go forward, because a lot of people have been questioning that and wondering more about that. And the definition for habituation is, "An extremely simple form of learning in which an animal, after a period of exposure to stimulus, stops responding. The most interesting thing about habituation is that it can occur at different levels in the nervous system. Sensory system may stop after a while, sending signals to the brain in response to the continuously present or often repeated stimulus. Lack of continued response to strong odors or sounds is common examples of sensory habituation. Habituation to complex stimuli may occur at the level of the brain. The stimulus is still perceived, but the animal has simply decided to no longer pay attention." And to me, that's where it's important that we continue to always harass and to make them uncomfortable and to keep those food sources away from them, because unfortunately, we are going to cause them to become habituated."
Well, and thank you for reminding me about that, because that was one of the points that I think the state officials made on the call, was talking about ramping up the hazing. And I know you talked the last time around about, if you're going to use an air horn or a whistle, or whatever it is you're going to use, you can't use it unless you mean it.
Right.
And then I disclosed, again, that I am somewhat of a crazy person on my street when I see a coyote. And I made the comment that, you know, it got to a point where the coyotes would just look and stand there, just thinking that I was a crazy lady. And what the people from the state said was, you have to ramp it up. You've got to make it louder. You've got to bring the hose out. You've got to, you know, continue to make it more and more uncomfortable. And I guess I just didn't understand that. I thought, you know, the same kind of noise would scare them off. But once, to your point, once they know they're not going to get hurt by that noise, then they're not going to be startled by it. And so the state official did talk at fair length about ramping up this hazing. So, anyway, really good information, great presentation. We'll continue to work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job reading that scat article.
Yeah. That was a tough one to read.
It was a tough one to read. Michelle, are you handling the next one, which is the gas main installation on Main Street? Is that you?
Yes. So Tom had a conversation with representatives from National Grid and folks from our engineering department about a week and a half ago or so to follow up and provide an update on Phase Two. So Phase Two is going to start after July 4th and likely continue until September, October. It's going to be almost 7,000 feet of main replaced on Main Street, starting near Central Fire Station and going up through Turkey Hill Lane, close to Route 3A. It's going to be the same subcontractors before M&amp;X Utility. And I think a lot of the conversation was being cognizant of sort of trying to find new staging areas. I understand that they'll continue to use the new, one of the new sites, which is behind the Central Fire Station, and they're exploring some other sites as well, and to try to minimize sound at night, so that residents are less disruptive. I do understand from our engineering department that there's quite a bit of ledge in that section of town, so that there'll be some, I don't know if the right term is blasting, but there'll be some louder noise that occurs. And I believe part of the conversation was Tom asking National Grid to maybe limit that noise until, only until 9:00 PM at night or so, so that it doesn't continue after. That means that the project may take a little bit longer, but that it would be less disturbing in terms of the noise levels at night. Most of the work will be taking place at night for the main replacement, until they switch to the day work, when they're hooking up the service connections to the individual houses. National Grid is also going to try to minimize the backup beeping noises, as they've tried to in the past. And the person that we always talk to there at National Grid is Dennis McCaffrey, and he says that anyone should contact him with any issues. He's very responsive, has been very helpful. His office number is 781-794-3515. That's Dennis McCaffrey. And the town, through the engineering department, will be sending out notifications, door hangers, putting stuff on the website, Facebook, and the email notifications before this work kicks off in the next few weeks.
Great. And Mary, I think, had asked last time about moving equipment during the day, so that even though it might be staged in a big clump somewhere, you could, before nightfall, the stuff could get moved to the location where they're working for that evening. Was that potentially part of their plan?
Yeah, I believe for the end of Phase One, that was sort of, now it's a non-issue, because that work was finishing up during the day. But yes, that's something that we discussed with Dennis about the night work that's coming.
Okay.
So they'll try to do that to the extent possible, get those materials in place.
Okay. Mary, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Joe?
How was traffic being routed during these operations?
I think, I know that police details are required for all of this work, but I could take a closer look at the grant of location.
I do remember looking at this, with the grant of location, there was a traffic plan. We can pull that out.
I think it was the week before. I remember Paul asking questions, but I think it's detouring, kind of two different ways to detour. And I think they're trying to start the detour at 3A, basically so that people don't kind of start down.
And have to.
And then realize what's going on and not have a lot of options. I think what we're trying to do is to minimize the amount of traffic that was spilling over into some of the side streets.
Right.
Michelle, could you maybe get Joe a copy of the grant of location letter?
And are bull and going out on town emails, so people know what streets are being disrupted and when?
Yes, so they'll do door hangers to the folks who are in the immediate area, as well as the email blast, the website posting, and the Facebook postings.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience on the gas main replacement? Mr. Demko.
Ed Demko, 18, ready, bye, bye.
Sorry, sorry to make you walk all the way over there.
I'm inquiring to the board what action's been taken on the prior submitted citizen petition on the alleged double-dipping, as reported by.
Yes, so that actually would have been appropriate at the public comment section, which was at the beginning.
I didn't get here in time.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. So, you know, I think what I said last week is what I'm going to say to you again tonight, that that's a personnel matter that we are working through. So I'm happy to talk to you after the meeting specifically about your petition. We've all reviewed it, but we are proceeding with the personnel.
I didn't want to get into personalities. I didn't know whether any action was being taken, because the money is going to be spent.
You know what I'm going to say, Mr. Demko, you're out of order right now, and I'd be happy to talk to you about this after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Anybody else on the gas main replacement? Okay. So now we have the water company process update.
Tom also asked me to provide an update to the board on this, so I will.
You getting a raise tonight, or?
So the town, including the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator's Office, legal team, volunteers, and others, have been working diligently towards an orderly transition of ownership from Eversource to the town of Hingham. To that end, many meetings have been held since town meeting in April to move the transition forward. These include three meetings with Aquarian's Capital Projects Team, five meetings with Eversource's transition team, a meeting with Eversource, Aquarian, and town officials at the DEP offices in Boston, and other meetings, including discussions with the towns of Hall and Cohasset. These meetings and discussions have resulted in a better understanding of expectations during this good husbandry period, leading up to this significant asset purchase. Further, by working together, we've come to a resolution on a pending DPU hearing, thereby saving significant potential legal expenses. We've also, as you know, coordinated the town's road building schedule with any potential infrastructure improvements, and we hope to bring on a transition water superintendent to assist with many of the near-term transition-related tasks that lay ahead. And we've interviewed several candidates for the Transition and Evaluation Committee and Citizens Advisory Board, which I know you all have been doing every night, basically, for the last few weeks. Much work has been done, and much work is still before us. We've received some calls from property owners in town with questions about their current water service, or requests for new water service in connection with upcoming projects. As of this date, the water system transition process has not yet been completed, so all water-related applications and inquiries should still be directed to Aquarian as the current operator of the water system. As I mentioned earlier, the town and Aquarian are in communication on a weekly, if not daily, basis at this point, and we really appreciate everyone's patience while we work through this very complex transition of ownership responsibilities for this vital public resource.
Thank you. Mary, anything to add?
No, thank you, Michelle.
Joe?
Well, just that it may not be visible on the outside, but there's a lot of work going on on the inside here to make sure that the transition is accomplished. And I've got to tell you that my two fellow selectmen to the right have been just incredible in the work that they've performed, and I've got a lot to do just to try to equal what they've done, so, thank you.
Well, I don't know about that. We put them right to work. So, you know, I'd echo Joe's remarks in that, you know, and maybe we just need to be better periodically of telling you what we're doing, because we started with a meeting the morning after town meeting that Mary attended, and we have been working diligently ever since then. You know, I think the exciting part of this work is that we're working towards something positive for the town. And I think we have assembled, we've assembled a team of volunteers and expert staff to take on kind of the various task categories that would be associated with, you know, a corporate acquisition of this nature. And, you know, I'm proud to be a part of that group that's working toward this purchase methodically and diligently, and I will say very cooperatively with both the folks at Aquarian and the parent company, Eversource. So, you know, I think anecdotally, we've all probably run into people or heard from people that they wonder what's going on, because we sort of led up to this very public phase coming to town meeting. And now, as Joe said, we're getting the work done. And that's, you know, that is somewhat technical, but nonetheless, we are moving through it. And again, as Michelle said, you know, one of the things that Mary, Joe, and I have been literally spending every night over the last several weeks doing is talking to your fellow citizens, 70-plus of them, who are interested in serving the town in one capacity or another. And as you know from town meeting, one of the committees that's open is the Transition Evaluation Committee and the Citizens Advisory Board, and people have expressed interest in serving the town in that regard. And just, you know, overall, I think it's very exciting, right? It's very positive, and we are, you know, continuing to work hard on your behalf with our colleagues to get this done. So, you know, and we will, I think, try periodically to just let you know that we're doing that, so. Anybody have any questions on the water update? No? Okay. So Goals and Objectives is me. And what I did was, I pulled out a really helpful document that Mary put together three years ago? Was it three years ago? And so it sort of specified big kind of goal areas, and then what initiatives might fall under those. We updated that a year or so ago, and so I will disseminate that, those documents, to both of you, to maybe add and subtract. You know, there are a few things coming up I think we've got to add to the list. You know, when we put these documents together, for instance, we didn't know that we were buying a water company. I think one of the things I realized, once I got to sit in this seat for a little bit, was making sure that you clearly identify kind of the tasks you can undertake and want to undertake, because, you know, I think, I think when I first came, I wanted to do, you know, 100 things. And we can't do 100 things well, but we can do several things very well. And I think it's just important for us as a board to kind of come together around those initiatives and put our best foot forward, again, for the town. So that's something that typically, you know, happens around this time of year as well, so we will be reassessing that in the next month or so. Any comments on Goals and Objectives?
Okay. I'd just add that I think we always, we always get. I'd just add that I think we always, we always get surprised by things. So two years ago, we had two 40B projects that really consumed a lot of things. A couple of years ago, town meeting wanted a dog program for Bear Cove Park. You know, different things are coming up, so as we're, as we're looking at this, I think we also want to understand our capacity and not, not sort of fill the glass all the way up to the top because the, there will be something that comes up that's unexpected. We just, we just don't know what it is yet.
Right. And, you know, some of it is your expectations as, you know, citizens of the town, like the dog leashing issue from town meeting. That's something we, you know, we gladly deal with. So I think, I think the three of us each have ideas, and as Mary's saying, I think it's important to come together around a few that we can really concentrate our efforts on.
I'd also say, Karen, as the sort of author of that framework.
I thought it was really good.
Well, every year I did it, I kind of liked it a little less every year.
Oh, I went back.
I don't know that, I guess what I would say is, you know, to me, the framework matters less than kind of the goals themselves, so if that framework just doesn't feel like it's suitable right now, I don't, I don't think it's set in stone.
No, 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 but I actually thought it was a good way to focus the conversation. So I went back and looked at it and thought it was pretty good, so. We'll see. Well, I'll send it to you all, and we can figure it out, but I thought it was a nice way to frame some of the initiatives. Anything else on that? No? Okay, we have a few. Where's the, okay, I just wanted to make sure seven was on the list. We have a few appointments tonight.
Yes, so first would be to reappoint the associate members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Right now, there are three associates, Mario Romania, Romania, Michael McCurio, and Joseph Freeman. They have served as associate members in the past year. I have had the pleasure of serving with them on the Zoning Board of Appeals. They are all excellent contributors, and they have agreed, much to my hope and expectation that they're willing to continue on for another year. The zoning board needs their assistance, and so I would like to make a motion to reappoint Mario, Michael, and Joe as associate members of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a one-year term ending June 30, 2020.
Second. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have the?
Yes, sure. I'll make a motion to reappoint Larry Lindner to the Community Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending June 30, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, is, where's the document from the planning board? It's got to be attached to this. No, it's not.
I'm not sure what you're looking for.
So this is an appointment as an associate member of the planning board, which is a joint appointment, so there would have had to have been a motion by the planning board to reappoint this person, and then it would be forwarded to us. Do we have that?
There was a letter from Bill Ramsey. Sharon has it. I'm not sure if it's in the packets, but yeah.
Yeah, you know what? I think it might be in our talent bank binders.
Oh, okay. And what is his name? So we've.
Ted Matthews.
So this is an appointment that is made both by the planning board, they've already done it, and now by the selectmen. And I would move to reappoint Ted Matthews as the associate member to the planning board for a one-year term ending June 30, 2022. Why is it saying a one-year term ending 2022?
It should be 2022, a three-year term, I believe.
Is that a three-year term?
2022.
The associate position is three-year?
I can double-check. I believe she was going to change both of those votes to 2022.
Why don't we hold off on this? We're going to meet next week anyway, right? Is there any reason he needs to be approved tonight?
I don't believe so. We can, we'll double-check.
So then we can check the term, or we can get the letter?
That'd be great.
Okay, let's just hold off. Any other questions on that? Okay. All right, should we move to, so Michelle, you'll just move that till the 25th?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we have a couple, few one-day liquor licenses, I think. These all look to be in order, Michelle?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
I reviewed them, and I thought they were in order.
I don't think we have any questions. Any questions on either one?
No.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Kelsey Strout on behalf of the McCord Foundation for the Tour de South Shore Bike Walk Event to be held at Wampatuck State Park on Saturday, September 21, 2019, from 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to do the next one?
Sure. I move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage license to Beth Cloud Largent on behalf of South Shore Conservatory for the Summer Spotlight Series to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on July 13, 20, and 27, 2019, from 7 p.m. to 9 p.m.
Second. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Fred Paul on behalf of Elmanovee for the Hingham Shipyard Yacht Show to be held at Hingham Shipyard Marina's on June 21 from 4 p.m. to 9 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's do the Cogshell Group. So the Cogshell Group, Joe points out, this is the group that owns Crow's Landing. Mr. Thornton came in last week to indicate that in the summer months, Mondays and Tuesdays are exceedingly slow, and so he'd like to close Mondays and Tuesdays. When you're a licensed entity, in, you know, a licensed alcohol entity, you can't just decide that you're going to close without letting people know and modifying your license, essentially, for this seasonal change. So he's come to us to actually ask for a reduction in the number of hours that he would serve alcohol in Hingham, and he would file that with the Alcohol Beverages and Control Commission.
Right, so this is not an increase in hours, this is, in fact, a decrease.
Decrease in hours. But it's not clear, as you pointed out, from the paperwork you filed.
Yes.
So I would take a motion.
I move that we approve the request of Cogshell Group LLC doing business as Crow's Landing for a change of operational hours as follows. Wednesday through Friday, 5 p.m. until midnight; Saturday, 2 p.m. to midnight; and Sunday, 10 a.m. to midnight.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So then we can go back to the Comprehensive Master Plan Agreement. Joe, I know that you've spent some time reviewing it. The changes that came in, at this point, I've reviewed, I talked with Gordon Carr about, it's just, the way, you know, the way the town likes to pay out this money is to make sure that we're going to get the product that we're buying at the end of the, at the end of the process. The billing cycle for the master planning work is going to take place in accordance with certain milestones, so the company's not going to get paid until it has a deliverable at a particular milestone. And so the wholeback, they've asked for a reduction in the wholeback from 10% to 5%. And given the billing structure of the contract, it seems reasonable to me, seemed reasonable to Gordon, I think you've reviewed it as well.
I've reviewed it as well, and I'm satisfied. And so the only change, as I understand it, from the agreement that we approved last meeting to this one, is the change in the reduction.
That's my understanding.
From 10% to 5%.
Is that right?
Correct.
Any questions, Mary?
No. I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the comprehensive master plan agreement as amended.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, and then the last one is a conflict of interest vote that we, we're the appointing authority, as you just learned, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And so under Massachusetts law, Massachusetts law, Chapter 268A defines, among other things, when there's a perceived or actual financial conflict, that somebody who's a special municipal employee, which will include members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, needs to disclose and disclose formally to the appointing authority. And so that's what's taking place next.
Yes, and so in this case, Mario Romania has filed the appropriate paperwork. At a meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, he has actually made an explanation of the interest, which is not his interest, it's the interest of his father, and it's a part, who is a partial owner and co-trustee of the property across the street. And Mario has assured us, and has assured the applicant, that his father and his partner have not raised any comments in connection with the application. After this was gone over with the applicant, the applicant did not express any concern or reservation with Mario participating, and I am comfortable that this does not, in fact, create a conflict of interest. So I've reviewed the particular matter, and the financial statements identified above, and, in my view, the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from Mario Romania.
Questions?
Nope.
So, you know, this kind of thing is very, very important for not only Mario to do, but for us to do. Everybody's got to have faith in this project, that people are coming to the table honestly with integrity and can perform the functions that they have pledged to perform for the town. So I appreciate Mario coming forward. I also appreciate the amount of time that Joe has taken to review the matter and to, you know, and to inform us this evening that this is an appropriate action by the Board of Selectmen.
And really, the threshold is to make sure that this is made public, that, in fact, the applicant knows what's going on, that we know what's going on, and that certainly has been the case here.
Thank you.
So, and I believe we need to actually approve.
Yes.
So do we have a formal motion here?
Yep, there's vote language, the last vote.
Good. So I move that the board determine that the financial interest of Mario Romania in matters related to a zoning application for the property at 11 Bank Avenue and 103105 North Street is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the town may expect from him acting as an alternate, actually, since that's an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, on such application.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, I think that concludes the formal agenda. Now we go to selectmen and town administrator reports. Since your friend has left you, do you have anything to report tonight?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Joe?
So I do, there was a meeting held last night in Waymouth. Representative Steve Lynch had invited representatives of the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration to come here from the community. There were a number of federal, state, and local representatives. And for the town of Hingham, Dr. Elizabeth Eldridge, who is the chairwoman of the Hingham Board of Health, attended the meeting in Waymouth on behalf of Hingham. She reported that there are about 100 to 150 people in attendance. All those in attendance were really against the compressor station. Representative Lynch made some public statements, and I'm just going to quote one. He said, "I think at the outset, it's fair to say that there remains a deep and abiding frustration among most, if not all, of the people who gather here tonight with the FERC, which is a Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, the FERC regulatory process thus far. We don't believe that FERC has listened to us, and we don't believe that the courts have listened, and we don't believe that we've been treated fairly." And so the purpose of the meeting was to make sure that the federal representatives, in fact, did hear from members of the community and understood the concerns. Dr. Eldridge reported her sense of the meeting, and there were two things that she wanted us to note. First, that the compressor station should be in a rural area, not on Route 3A in Waymouth. And that, second, this area is a high consequence area due to high density, environmental threat, and the potential threat to maritime vessels, as well as automotive traffic. The town is continuing to monitor the entire process, and we will stay on top of it.
Thank you, Joe. Mary?
Couple things. Last Thursday, I actually represented the town and the board at the Plymouth County Commissioners' Annual Meeting, and this is where the operating budget for Plymouth County is reported. Just so people know, we are one of the few kind of, county government has kind of gone by the wayside in lots of different parts of the country, and in Massachusetts. Plymouth County is pretty vibrant. It's a $10 million budget. It manages the courthouses, including the one we have here in Hingham, the Registry of Deeds. They also provide different services, an airplane, a fire control airplane, a dredging program for smaller dredging than, say, Hingham Harbor. They also administer the Mayflower Municipal Health Groups. So, you know, $10 million budget, the, you know, as members of the advisory board, there were 27 selectmen there, discuss the budget, vote the budget. I think what Plymouth County is facing is that our assessment, the assessments of the communities can only grow by 2.5%. They also get a lot of money from revenue from services, but have to pay the state. So Plymouth County, like every municipality, they're under fiscal pressure as well. I think in the five years since I've represented the town with Plymouth County, I think the commissioners are really focused on delivering a sustainable budget that doesn't rely on one-time money. Every year, that gets harder. But my hat's off to them for what they do, and really looking at ways to make sure that the county services that we rely on are being provided in a cost-effective way. And then two other things, I just, Friday night, I represented the board. Troop One had their Court of Honor, and I just want to congratulate Dennis Johnson, who is Ginny and Fred Johnson's son, on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, a really big milestone. And I also want to give a shout-out to Boy Scout Troop Four. You may have seen, it's been picked up on the news, it's starting to go national. There were, Troop Four was out on the main river, and they were earning merit badges and doing other things, and there were eight canoeists that needed rescuing, and they put their skills to use. And these are fifth grade through sophomores in high school here in Hingham. They did a wonderful job. They, they're being, you know, they saved some lives, and we just extend our appreciation to them and their scout leadership, and to their families for raising such fine young men.
Well, and their poise in the articles, when they were interviewed, they were very articulate about what they did and why they did it, and how quickly they jumped to the task. It was really, really impressive.
They knew what to do, and they saved people that were a heck of a lot older than they were.
Yeah.
Wow.
With a lot of poise, as you said.
Yeah. So I've got a few things tonight. I just wanted to recognize Jody Nash, the Arc of the South Shore, has awarded Jody the Community Partner Award for her tireless effort on behalf of individuals with special needs. So Jody, congratulations on that. You do the town and your family proud. I was able to represent the board at the Girl Scout Gold Award last week. It was held at the Hingham High Auditorium, and it was filled with Girl Scouts ranging from Daisy Scouts up through Cadet and Ambassador Scouts. So everybody from kindergarten all the way up to high school was fabulous. And Hannah Boucher received her Gold Award for a project directed at health, fitness, and nutrition for middle school and high school girls. So that was fabulous. The Silver Award went to Keely Jordan for her Food Allergy Buddies Project, and Emily O'Connor for Senior Citizens Share Experience Project. And then the Bronze Award was a group effort by Grace Howe Roberts, Christina McGrath, Leah Boucher, and Caitlin Oravitz, and it was in-school on a kind note. And I was like, oh, if we could capture that and put that in a bottle, that was well worth the Bronze Award. William Bryant, the Historical Society, recognized him for excellence in history. And, you know, I think we've all seen, if you've paid attention to the Hingham Anchor or the Journal online, the successful sports season, I think that the Hingham High School sports teams are having. And in particular, I stopped on Saturday evening to watch the boys capture the D1 South Championship in a nail-biting overtime win against Duxbury, and they move on to take on Lincoln Sudbury this Thursday in the D1 Championship. So good luck to that team. And last, but certainly not least, you know, I think one of the honors that we have in our position is to work with, over the long haul, folks who have made significant commitments to this town. And tonight, we want to recognize Brenda Black, who is stepping down.
And tonight, we want to recognize Brenda Black, who is stepping down from the Cleaner Greener Hingham. I think when she started, it was still called the Long Range Waste Disposal.
And Recycling.
And Recycling Committee. You sort of done that, right? And our, our moderator started out there, so see what can happen, folks. But, but Brenda has just been, again, over the long haul, very committed to these environmental concerns in Hingham before it was really a thing. And I just want to read off a few of the things that, as part of the committee, she's helped make happen in this town. She's made sure that recycling bins were made available all over town, sports fields in downtown. I mean, now, right, when you're, when you are somewhere like that, you immediately look for it, and somebody had to make sure it was there, and Brenda, Brenda was part of that effort. She made sure that all schools had a green team, and we heard from two of the green team members this year at town meeting, who spoke very eloquently and comprehensively about our single-use plastic bag ban. So, that stuff, again, just doesn't happen. That's been a longtime effort, and Brenda was there at the start of that. She was the driving force behind enacting mandatory recycling and dumpster regulations. She really promoted educational efforts around recycling. She was instrumental at the swap shop, and, you know, under Brenda's direction, community events like the farmer's market are now recycling. So, again, I think, if you look at where we are now, it's, it's almost automatic, but without the work of, of Brenda and others, we, we wouldn't be the kind of community we are, and how important those efforts are to our environment. So, on behalf of the board, I just would like to, I'd just like to read the certificate that we are awarding to Brenda Black. In recognition of valuable contributions to Cleaner Greener Hingham from 2006 to the present, in grateful appreciation for over 13 years of service on the Long Range Waste Disposal and Recycling Committee, now known as Cleaner Greener Hingham, your commitment to reducing waste and increasing recycling practices for the benefit of our town and the environment has made Hingham a more vibrant and sustainable community for generations to come. Signed, Mary M. Power, Joseph Fisher, and Karen A. Johnson.
Hear, hear.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, after all of that, seeing nothing else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.